It's good now.
For our guest this evening's meeting, tonight's meeting is to discuss possible action items that will be voted on next Wednesday's meeting. Uh, I will give everybody a chance at the end after we've had a chance to go through all the uh, uh, issues. Uh, we'll pass this flag salute, roll call, recognition of meetings. Uh, we had, uh, from seven to seven twenty regular board meeting on April twelfth. April twenty fifth, five thirty to nine forty-five personnel committee and May first, twenty twenty-three to from five fifteen to eight o'clock. That was the athletic committee for personnel. Any questions on the meetings? Our administrative reports, um, Mr. Sager.
Um, driver meeting last month, um, and just about trying to stay focused with the drivers driving, you know. We lined up towards the end of the year, driving crazy and just trying to stay focused for that forty-five minutes while they're driving and not worry about everything else going on. There'll be lots of crazy drivers out there, try to get them to stay focused. Um, also training a couple of people, hopefully they can have them ready for school start. Don't anticipate anybody leaving, but I'm trying to be prepared. And also just working on routine maintenance for upcoming special.
I did have one question. I had a person ask me about traffic out on four twenty-two by Ben Franklin. You know, what can we do to make people stop at the, and I go, it's a, it's a law. I don't know that there's anything you can do past the state making a law that you have to stop for buses. I mean, do we, does your bus driver get upset? I mean, does he have, they have any issues or?
There's always big concerns out there, but what I try to tell them to do out there, always we have kids on the doorstep getting off.
Right.
Thing to do first. Um, they can always activate yellows early and try to get the traffic to know what's going on. But that's why I was talking about trying to stay focused. I try to tell them, you worry about what we're doing on this bus. Don't worry about the traffic, the traffic's supposed to stop. We can't say, we can't be looking over there. We gotta watch what we're doing. Get the kids off the bus. But sometimes people stop, sometimes they don't. We can't be looking over there trying to get plates and all that stuff. What I don't want them to do, let, let somebody else out. We gotta worry about what we're doing.
Right.
And that's all we can do out there. Try to give them preparation with the yellows first longer than normal.
Right. And we're getting as close as we can. I mean, and we don't have kids crossing roads, so then.
No, nothing out there at all. And, uh, yeah, you can sit out there all the time and somebody will stop and somebody will go through.
Oh, yeah.
It's the way it is.
Okay. I was just curious. I had somebody ask me about some. Any questions for Mr. Sager?
So we asked the state police that like, is there?
We've, we've done that. The parents have called and said, we're getting police out there and they actually did it and they'll catch somebody every time. But there's new people every day to come through. There's gonna be somebody different, you know?
Uh, Mr. Novad is excused tonight. Uh, Mrs. Bell.
Uh, I am so excited and so proud about, uh, so I had to show pictures with you guys on your board spot, board slides. I showed you guys pictures of what they did. So out of like, all of the schools in Pennsylvania, there were ten schools, um, asked to go to I U P. And I think the other college was land, out in Lancaster somewhere. Um, our life skills classroom has been building drones and partnering with the I U to build drones. And, um, we were asked to go and compete at the state level with our drones. And so I shared pictures with you guys on how excited and how good the kids did in competing with these drones. So, um, so cool. On the other end of stuff, um, school-wide positive behavior support, we are doing, um, like a pep rally award assembly at the elementary where we're giving away three hoverboards. Um, for the three through six, it'll be during their awards ceremony and then K to two, um, we're gonna pick somebody from K to two to win a hoverboard. That's what we're doing schoolwide for the end of the year. Early intervention meetings, the kids that are coming in with I E Ps. Um, we've met with all of those parents so far. We'll meet with them again at the end of the May, um, to prep them for what's gonna happen. Um, we had seven originally, um, and then we're looking at possibly maybe five, um, with I E Ps that are, that are coming in. So we've met with those families. We're prepared. We're, we're well ahead of the game there. We also had, um, and we got a compliment from, um, O V R about how we do our, and I thought every district did this, but we meet with every senior that's graduating. And we make sure that they have a plan for what's gonna happen after graduation. So we had those meetings with our seniors, um, they all are connected with services or have jobs leaving here. Coming up will be our sixth graders. We plan on bringing them up to the seventh grade, again, having them meet their teachers, um, and making sure that the services will transition smoothly. Um, Mrs. Jacobs, our speech therapist came back May first. Amen. Um, Mrs. Mater was wonderful though. Jamie Mater's from down by Cranberry or Wexford. If you've ever known, I'm telling the other districts, she was wonderful. Um, I just wish I could have begged her sooner, um, to come, but she was such a sweet lady. So thank you to her. The ticket system that we have for student services, um, there has been eight tickets for the month of April. And, um, we had a response time of twelve minutes, Rob. See that? That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Bell? Mr. Swirble?
Um, so that last month, believe it or not, quarter three report cards out and actually recently already sent the quarter four progress report. So hard to believe we're under twenty days already wrapping up the school year coming quickly. Um, curriculum advisory council meeting, only reason I, uh, not the only reason, but one of the reasons why I want to point that out is, um, we have some change in new science standards. So got a lot of information about that. Um, after along with teachers, we're actually do some work on Friday to start building and preparing for that. They're moving when the science test is at the elementary level from fourth to fifth grade. Um, adding some engineering standards to, to the mix. So some changes, some good changes, but, uh, we gotta prepare for those. Um, we had a student recently, Tricia Hauser, uh, qualified for the national academic games, uh, placed third in nationals for propaganda. Um, and over, out of all the kids there finishing the top twenty-five percent. So represented a little very well, which we knew she would and we're proud of her accomplishments there. Um, we had the P S A assembly as we do kind of right before the tests, get the kids pumped up about it, make sure they're relaxed, you know, talk about what to do and, um, I think it, it goes well. Like I said, we've had some, we're wrapping up the last week here. It's been very smooth, but as you can tell, we're getting towards the end of testing and, um, kids are starting to get tired of testing. But, you know, doing the best we can. We have one more day tomorrow. We have the science for fourth grade and then we'll be all done with P S A.
Okay, good. Any questions for Mr. Swirble? Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Uh, the month of May and at the high school, I don't think you can go a day without something. Um, I could have probably put ten slides together, so I apologize if it is too long, but I think I went through the calendar. There's only one day we actually have just a normal, regular day with not a field trip or testing or assembly of some sort. So here are the highlights for the high school of recent and what's coming up. Um, we had a successful F F A banquet. Mr. Rich and I attended. Um, Miss Columbus went to the choir concert and I went to the band concert recently. Mr. Pertown and I went over to Lawrence County Career and Technical Center to, uh, visit and view their senior project exit interviews, which will be implemented here at the high school next year. And we also revised the senior privilege procedures, which I believe is in your agenda tonight to take a look at. As far as athletics recently, Laurel girls finished first in the MAC, which that's pretty, uh, pretty big achievement with you're going up against some bigger schools there in Beaver County and some of Allegheny County. So that's something to be proud of. Uh, like Mr. Swirble said, we finished up science today at the high school with eighth grade. Finished up E L A last week and math earlier this week. Upcoming testing Keystone exams on the sixteen, seventeenth and eighteenth. We'll do lit on the sixteen, bio on the seventeenth and algebra on the eighteenth. Tomorrow, huge day, tractor day. Kids are all excited for that. I told them nobody be in the parking lot before six, so hopefully they abide by that. Um, I'm gonna try to add something to it. We'll see if it works or not. Um, I went down to, uh, Goag Room the other day and mentioned to them that maybe about eight o'clock or five after, they wanna fire them up and we do a parade lap around the school. They sort of took to that. So we'll see if that works tomorrow or not. See if that blows up my face or, or if it's something that will add to, uh, to the tradition. So we'll see. Mr. Ypack sold t-shirts. Uh, those are a great sale. Um, hopefully they wear us tomorrow and then obviously this week on Friday, we have the grand march in the auditorium at five thirty. And then the prom at S M P J at seven o'clock. We have A P exams going on in the last two weeks. Senior events coming up. I think, um, Brenda put on each, everybody's spot an invitation for commencement in an envelope for you. Um, that'll be June second, I believe. Um, we'll plan it for the field, obviously, and hope for good weather. So master schedule. We're just coming to the conclusion of that. Talked to Mr. Swirble about possibly bump up day where we even bring the sixth graders up to go through next year's schedule and everybody else goes through their next year, next year's schedule. Trying to figure out those logistics. Summer school for seventh and eighth grade, that's also in your agenda to take a look at. And then, um, you also have from Mr. Swirble's, the, uh, recap from the F B L A conference. You can copy that at your desk as well.
Any questions for Mr. Lee? Looks like it's gonna be nice weather tomorrow morning and quit raining also.
Yes.
Mrs. Columbus?
Well, I don't have tractor day on here, but I did warn Mr. Lee that last year, the biggest tractors were all driven by a girl. So that was something. Um, student council actually held a karaoke night a couple of weeks ago, but I, um, came to and attended. Um, been very busy for me. I've been at the magistrate quite a bit with some trinity hearings and some hearings that we had for some incidents that occurred. Um, following up and wrapping up quite a bit in May. I think I have four hearings, only a left, um, alone. A lot of times I'll ask for continuation. So when we go, I'll ask for a continuation so that they have to try to improve their attendance either thirty days or forty-five days. If that's what, but sometimes if we go and they find them guilty, then they'll just say they're fine or whatever, and then they go back to their old habits. This way I have, I have for, for a while. Um, yearbook updates. We had some hiccups with the yearbook, but we now have, um, Mr. Lee and I have, uh, worked, um, along with our yearbook advisor and bought things moved out. So now, um, parents can all get on it or online for their yearbook. So hopefully we have that. Uh, Mr. Swirble mentioned the P S F A assembly in the elementary. I actually had student council members, um, a couple of members from National Honor Society. That helped plan and go down and, um, present the assembly to the students. It was nice. I had, uh, a group of ladies that went around both the elementary and high school and got students and their kindergarten, first, second grade teachers to wish them good luck. So we were able to show the video at the assembly with the student night. Um, and, uh, Mr. Lee then Mr. Swirble mentioned the P S F A's. We were very fortunate here, uh, at the middle school. I think the most makeups we had in any house was like four or five. We had excellent attendance for it. Um, we actually had a couple of kids get sick during the test, so we haven't yet.
That'll blame them.
Um, so we had the choir and band concerts. Just in, uh, to mention with the band concert, when, uh, Mr. Boyer had, um, a paid commission especially for our students. Those are on YouTube, so if anybody ever wants to go back and watch. Um, National Principals Day was this week and the three of us all thought to go into the cafeteria and put our hairnets on and serve porn. They said that they never served so much porn in the cafeteria before. Um, I guess that a lot of my, a lot of our pictures were floating around the school. The kids are having fun with it. Um, while Mr. Lee is enjoying the prom, I will be here at five in the morning, leaving the eighth graders to head to Gettysburg. So praying and hoping for good weather. It rained the whole time last year, but we still had a great time. So hopefully, um, hopefully, uh, good report.
Good. Um, the discipline thing, they're all, um, attendance issues mostly or, I mean, I know you can't.
Yeah, the majority. We had, um, a couple, um, incidents of, uh, fights that we had to address too. But thanks to our camera system, we were able to provide footage.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Columbus? Uh, Mrs. Conrad? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lee?
Uh, yeah, just, we're just continuing to plan for the summer, getting everything ready. Um, then we already spoke about the assessment, but one of the things I did is visible. We put an assessment accountability section on the website. So it'll house everything and pretty much anything needed to pass as, uh, in audit. One of the, uh, one of the representatives for the state, which we're anticipating, but we haven't seen them yet. Um, also created a document with staff administration resources, more of an interactive document as opposed to just a scanned document to hand out to teachers. Worked really well with, um, Mrs. Columbus, Mr. Lee and Mr. Swirble to, to make this happen in regard to testing. I've been down the elementary school with Mr. Swirble last, well, um, last two weeks and it's gone really well. Mrs. Columbus stood up here. We put some new protocols in place to ensure test security and it's gone well. Um, so testing's good. Everything in E L A is complete. We already sent all this book list back and we'll be ready for early scoring. We'll get our scores early. Um, we're in the process of P boss roster verification. That's just connecting teachers to students to test. So that's just something that takes place in P I Ts and then we work with the principals and the teachers to make that happen. Um, submitted all, all of the E rate funding, uh, finally got equipment in, installed the switches we were waiting for and, uh, you know, we're submitted successfully funded for twenty-three, twenty-four as well. I didn't tell you that yet, Mr. Conrad. So, um, taken today, but we had a hundred and nine. Sorry, Mr. So, two hours, forty-five minutes was our first response time and we closed two days and fifteen hours. That's a lot more than Mrs. Bell, but this is under the, um, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Lee, I got a question.
Yes.
Um, where are we at with having the staff go through the fishing?
I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have, I have a meeting on, on Monday with that trainer. I had one from last week and they canceled on me. So I got on her next, the, the very first availability she had. So I, I should be rolling this line sometime. My goal would actually be probably like Wednesday, Thursday next week to start pushing things out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Mr. Lee? Uh, no, we'll go to Mrs. Conrad.
Um, budget of course has been, that's both of those, most of my attention and we'll do the budget presentation next. To that, made an update, um, to the agenda. Um, it's got, a couple of my three A T V D opportunities, these are, uh, investments over T D's and ranking, they had a better interest rate than we had. Um, but they had a saving conference commonwealth with about a hundred and three thousand in it and they had a T D program for fifteen months to grow for the next year. This was literally just to give the work before a couple of years and, um, so reporting that that's gonna happen, so I'm gonna bring that tomorrow. Um, and then there was the last ministry trip and I added, it's on board dogs, it's not only a trade copy, but, but things from them and Sam's given for going to the show.
No, yeah, well, you have first reading and second reading.
Right.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, you can vote on a first reading, but, um, the second reading and first reading don't have to match.
Okay. Well, that's what, cause I wanna have a meeting somewhere in between the two and make sure, you know, that state of Laurel list, there's maybe things that were not, you know?
Well, we, we've done some of that. When you see the number, you might want to do some more, but, um, uh, correct. You will be voting on first reading, but, um, just to be clear, first reading's not the final budget. The final budget's on second reading. First reading and second reading do not have to be identical.
Do we have something in the board doc of what is included in the budget, like for capital investments and so forth?
Um, we, there is a presentation that we're gonna go over. If that's insufficient, obviously you're entitled to help the whole spreadsheet.
Well, no, I just, just certain as I was, I was looking for. I mean, it doesn't, it might actually be in your presentation.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Conrad? Mr. Rich?
Okay, uh, Rob, you wanna pull up the budget presentation?
Well, I have.
Yeah, it's under admin reports. Right there. Doesn't that say it right there on your screen right now?
All right, there.
There you go. All right. Good? Okay, go to slide two. All right. So our proposed budget upon first readings, we're looking at revenues of over nineteen and a half million and expenses of over twenty-one point seven million. That leaves a two point one million dollar, um, deficit. He's looking for yours right there. There's.
Oh, okay. I thought that was Jim's.
Keep something in mind, two items alone on this budget constitute one point one million dollars of your deficit. Uh, we've committed to the roof. Now let me tell you that this is the oldest section of roof. The next oldest section was two thousand and seven with a thirty-year guarantee. So you ought to be good in Laurel School District for, uh, at least another five years, if not ten, be- before we start with the roof replacements from two thousand and seven. Um, we, you know, we talk about that, but then it's another thing to see it in black and white. Also, uh, a water softener. It's, it's not a want to, it's a have to. It's another two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I will say that if there's a degree of being fortunate, we are fortunate in that, uh, we are able to pull these from fund balance and not finance major maintenance projects. Next slide. Okay, some budget highlights. So let's follow salary and benefits from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three and twenty-four. If you look at the total picture of going from fourteen point nine to fifteen point one million, a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. I think that's remarkable in controlling our biggest costs. We're not a factory, we're government agency. So our largest expenditure is related to personnel. Uh, there was a slight decrease in the Pizer's contribution from thirty-five point two-six to thirty-four. And then obviously, um, with the state of Laurel, as Mr. Redford pointed out, the district has made a commitment to be proactive and not reactive. And some things in there, we are making curricular change in the world history. But unlike days gone by where you'd order the book for every, uh, person in the classroom, we have Chromebooks. We order a classroom set of textbooks for in-class readings, maps, charts, graphs, things like that. Um, this does contain a tax increase to the index, which is going to generate about two hundred thousand dollars. And with the average house and property in Laurel assessed at eighty-one thousand dollars, that's gonna be less than fifty additional dollars for our taxpayers. You have not done anything with tax rates since two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. Also, not tonight, but next Wednesday, you're going to learn a new vocabulary word. Lucky? Okay. Lucky is your local ability for, for funds, okay? So where are you in your median household income? And oh, by the way, out of the eight school districts in Lawrence County, where do you think we rank in median household income? You're four off.
Better than five.
Two. We are the second highest median income. And we have the lowest tax rate. So the state is going to tell you, we have a greater ability to tax. And that lucky is attached to the funding formula. I E, if you don't raise taxes, you won't maximize what comes from the state.
So is the catch, isn't it, sir?
That sounds like for federal government, you have a high psycho score and you get a loan, you have to pay more to subsidize, keep all of that.
So in, in any event, um, Mrs. Conrad and I talked, um, a, a little bit about that today. She's gonna put just some nuts and bolts things together. We're not gonna be able to say if you do this, it's gonna cost you this much money. If you do that, it's gonna cost you how much money. But you need to know that this goes back to, and, and this, I'll come around with this in our presentation. With Esser funds and other things, many of our state legislators believe that schools are sitting on large fund balances. I've told you this before. I believe that there's some type of motivation to get school districts to spend down these fund balances and reclaim, if you will, these tax dollars that haven't been, been spent. So, um, that, that's my, I don't wanna call it slight conspiracy theory, but for lack of a better way of saying it. You know, what, what's their, what's their motivation by keeping the pressure on, uh, local schools and underfunding public schools? So, um.
So we're number two. Who's number one?
The Shannick would be the highest meeting.
And we're under, we're just one under.
Yeah. Cause you're loaded.
I don't care. Yeah. It must gotta be Lance over there that's throwing all the stuff off.
I thought we were putting our fund balance into capital accounts and.
Well, we'll, we'll get into where, where the monies are and capital reserves funds and whatnots. But the, the issue has been that there, there's been the last three or four fiscal years, there, we have not been able to, um, come to zero or put money in relative to a surplus. Uh, this budget is eight point six percent larger than last year. And again, roof, water softener, library, which is Esser funded. And then of course your increases in salary and benefits. This budget does include two teacher retirements, one custodial retirement. Um, now, it's in the budget to replace both of those teaching positions and to replace that custodial position. Um, and moving the transportation director to a ten ninety-nine as well as, uh, instead of ten ninety-nining our computer tech work technician, network specialist. Instead of ten ninety-nine, that, that's gonna be a district position. Next slide. Okay, so how do we control? Yes, sir.
Um, back on the last slide. So just to be clear. So just to be clear, the library transformation is one hundred percent Esser's funded.
Correct. Correct. And that meta category, I can't speak to the exact category because we wrote the grant how many years ago. But, um, that's in a category of the particular grant. And then, and then as we talked about with these grants before, you know, they don't just sign you a check, right? Money for this, money for that. So it fit money for a category. And yes, any dollars we spend in the library are zero local dollars, zero state dollars. Hundred percent federal dollars through our Esser.
All right, thank you.
Next slide. All right, controlling the growth of the budget. Salaries and benefits constitute about seventy percent of our budget. If you add in our debt service and fixed costs, seventy-five percent. If you put in our utilities, eighty-five to eighty-seven percent. So realistically, and I'm gonna reference Mr. Redford again, when you talk about what's in and what's out of the state of Laurel, you're down to the last thirteen percent. You know, what, what are we gonna say about the electric bill? Oh, we're not paying that this year, you know? And we, we should always on our utilities be very aggressive on what to expect. You can't count on a mild winter every year and then you get a mild winter like we had and they were kind enough to raise the utility rates and thereby eat any savings relative to that. So, um, one of the big misnomers is with budget cuts, we're gonna cut a book, we're gonna cut a Chromebook, we're gonna cut a football. That's thirteen percent of the budget. You're, 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 you're controllable is your personnel. And I'll also say, and it's not in this presentation, but if you look at comparable sized districts in terms of population, uh, Wilmington and Shenango, they have ten to thirteen more K twelve staff than the Laurel School District. So I'm not coming to you and saying, don't replace this position or don't replace that position. All right. So the single most expensive part of a public budget is personnel costs, payroll, benefits. Replace that or absorb. Whenever there's a retirement in any one of these departments, they need to show me why. So I can sit here confidently, for example, let's go to the middle high school this year, okay? We are, we have an art retirement. We have but one. So your choice is, do you? So your choice is, do you want art 712? If the answer is yes, you hire the teacher. Or do you not want art 712? You eliminate the teacher. So that's an easy recommendation for me. I want to have art. I want to hire the teacher. Second, now let's look at the math department, okay? We have a math retiree. One of the things that we did as a 712 administrative team is we looked at course offerings, we looked at requests, we looked at schedule, we looked at if we wanted to absorb a position, what comes off the board? You can't teach the same with four that you did with five. And there isn't enough of a population drop in this building. We know the smaller classes are coming. But at this moment in time, I'm not comfortable reducing through attrition a math teacher. So it's going to be my recommendation to you to leave the math position in the budget. But, um, you know, that, that is ultimately up, up to you, but, um. So when we say about personnel, we must decide whether we're going to replace, add or absorb. And these decisions are always on the table. But for this year, those are my recommendations to you based upon conversations I've had with our administrative team. You do need to keep in the back of your mind that, uh, in four years, we will be debt-free and that'll add another 1.2 million dollars in revenue each and every year to the budget. Now keep something in mind, when we pull these ESSER monies out, I mean, we got a deficit now. When we pull these ESSER monies out, what will the cumulative deficit, deficit be? When we pull the ESSER monies out, what are we going to do with that 13% that we normally look to state of Laurel? Those are going to be some tough, tough questions. Because you're, you're going to want to, our, our deficit is already bigger annually than 1.2 million. So that infusion doesn't get you to zero. And no one's looking to run out of money. Utility.
Definitely good who's in four years though. I mean, I didn't realize that.
Right. So, um, utilities, we do look for consortiums. Okay. Retirement rates, let's continue. So I, I always leave this one in there, not only to tell you what our rate was, but go back not too long ago. A 400% increase from 2011 to 2023, even with the cutback. I mean, you're talking about millions of dollars in difference right there by just a charge that they assess you that you have no freedom to deal with. Next slide. Okay, your 1100s are your largest programs. These are your, uh, regular education programs. A very small increase. Uh, we have, we have less in salaries reflective upon our retirements. We do show some increases in substitutes. Excuse me, and this does show some PCCD, which would be different from ARPESER, some PCCD expenditures. Major items here are salary and benefits. Next slide. 1200 is special education, and you do see an increase there. Um, we do have a teacher moving from, uh, column one, uh, moving out horizontally to the master's column. And that does have an impact on salary, but also we have OT in here, PT in here, equipment. That's special ed. Yes?
I did have one question. Back on the retirement.
Sure.
Um, on those rates, just so everybody knows, isn't that over a million dollars a year just in the retirement?
Oh, sure.
Okay, you have it.
Yep. Oh, sure. Right.
I mean, it's a big number. It's.
Right. Our assess, on a $6 million payroll, our assessment's $2 million.
Right.
If you divide that by four, it'd be 500,000.
Right.
So your bill has gone up 400% since 2011. So that's an additional million and a half. I think that's what you're referencing.
Right. Just so the new people coming on realize, you know, this is where a big chunk of your money's going that you don't really even realize, I don't think.
No, and that's where I go back to what I said about the reclamation. They're taking that from us directly. So they're taking, if you look at our deficit, and we have a higher this one because of the roof, but let's go with that, okay? If you take that million and a half, and if, but, you know, we could have a party, but if you take that million and a half, we'd be close, we'd be close to a balanced budget if we were paying about a 9% assessment rate instead of a 34% assessment rate. So that is a huge multi-million dollar difference.
That we never used to have because years ago, they cut our contribution rate way down. And then we had a change of governors and.
And then they invest, then they invested in MCI. And I don't know if you, if you're, if you're old enough to remember all that, but that, that investment went belly up. And that was a huge part of the Peasars investment, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, 1300s, Rob, VoAg. VoAg sees a $30,000 decrease here. Uh, we did do a computer lab upgrade specifically for VoAg last year that we aren't doing this year. And there's a small change in compensation relative to, uh, change in personnel. Changes by department, 1400. All right. So your other instructional, uh, programs here. So the, these costs have been cut. Uh, these are related to, uh, driver's ed, summer school, homebound, alternative education and court placements. Uh, we've done a, a, a good job controlling those expenditures. Guidance, 2120. Um, the increase of 2.8, uh, two guidance counselors, a guidance secretary, small percentage due to salary and benefits. Psychologist, uh, again, small increase in her salary and benefits. There are other things there besides her salary and benefits. We're not paying the psychologist $200,000. Changes by department, 2220, technology. All right. This is a significant, um, increase because now we're going from a 1099, uh, to a Laurel employee. So along with that salary, along with those, um, uh, that comes Peasars, FICA, uh, benefits for one, uh, et cetera. 2250, library. There's some increase in, uh, supplies, books and software. The rest is in salary and benefits. Director of, uh, pupil services, there is, uh, an increase here of about 10.36% beyond salary and benefits. Uh, there's some software in here and there are some training materials that, um, are not, um, year-over-year costs as they're, they're, uh, a one-time purchase. 2271, staff development. So on the one hand, when you hire younger staff, you pay them less. But on the other hand, they're going to seek their instructional too. So, uh, we have a significant increase here, um, for tuition, for reimbursement, for newer teachers. I would expect that, uh, to continue for the foreseeable future. The latest information out of the IU is this is the most experienced staff in three counties with an average of 19.25 years. 2310, board services. This is all things PSBA. This is our solicitor. This is our specialty counsel for special ed, Andrews and Price. And you see a small, uh, decrease there due to tax collector bonds are, um, only due once every three years. 2360, superintendent's office. So, uh, this includes multiple personnel, including myself, uh, salary and benefits. We do have an employee coming on with benefits that waived benefits in prior years. So that takes up most of that percentage increase. 2380, building level administration. We did budget for an increase in salary. We know that there's going to be an increase in their benefits. PAETEP is the evaluation software. This also includes not only building admin, but secretaries, et cetera. 2390, other administrative services. So this is, uh, all things retiree. We do have two more retirees going into this category and we don't have anyone going to Medicare, um, and getting off of our benefits in this category. So that's the increase there. 2400, which is the nurse, uh, you see a small decrease here due to change in benefit and a budgeted waiver of health insurance rather than taking the health insurance. 2511, business services. So again, this is, uh, all things in the business office. I believe there are at least three people there. And then also these are all things to support those three people, the audits, costs, business office, software, et cetera. 2620, 2630, operation and maintenance. This is all things ed, uh, not only his, uh, department, but all things we do relative into that department. So, uh, as far as a percentage increase, it's very small, at 1.14%. 2660, our school police. Uh, we're looking at an increase of 16.54, but a lot of that increase is going to be, uh, things, um, purchased with the, uh, PCCD grant. And that's the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. So again, these would be state dollars, but they aren't state subsidy dollars and they aren't, they aren't local dollars. 2700, transportation. So last year, we grabbed two buses when we could. So we knew this year we would not need to buy a bus. So that's why you were seeing a decrease here this year. Um, last year, we also wanted to buy a van last year and a van this year. Uh, couldn't get anything. So now we're going to get two, um, two minivans. We should be able to get those. 2840, information management systems. So, uh, you see a rather, uh, small increase here related to salary and benefits, but there's a decrease in contracted services and there's, uh, some increase in some one-time, uh, purchases. 3200, student activities and athletics. Now I want to break down this 760, okay? This also includes every athletic stipend. So if you go through the, uh, coaches' stipends in the teacher's contract, um, this is more than just, uh, buying bats and balls and gloves and everything else. But these are, these are all the people needed to operate our events such as the AD, the coaches, the game workers. Our streaming crew is, uh, uh, still in there. Um, it's, it's still popular. So we've kept that on. Uh, our bus drivers and police coverage for events. 4000, site and building improvements. So here's where many of our state of Laurel items are. These are many one-time expenditures. Some of them are listed there. Okay. Um, next slide. I apologize for the viewing public. You're not going to be able to see that too well. But for, uh, for the board in hand, um, you wanted to know what's in and what's out and you want to do a separate meeting, uh, I, what I can do, Mr. Redfoot, is, uh, rather than, um, we cause eye strain to focus on this, I'll reshare the state of Laurel document with the board so you can see what's in and what's out. Um, just like last year, you will have another opportunity, another crack, crack at it to either put something in or take something out.
We, we discuss that now or?
Um, if, if there's something particular you want us to look at, yeah.
Yeah, volleyball solution. We voted to do that last year. Now I see it flashed out.
Yes.
I was wondering.
So, um, last year we approved the money, but what we were going to do doesn't fit, right? So we went measured whatnot and it wasn't a continuation. It's right now currently out, um, basically because of the $900,000 roof and the $260,000, uh, water softener. But, uh, again, something that you're talking about there Lance.
Yeah.
We're going to have a separate meeting, right? Feel free to say what's in and what's out and this board's got to come to consensus. So I would say that the, 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 these are as of this moment in time, but until there's a second reading, it's not a permanent in or it's not a permanent out.
What, how much money did we de- dedicate last year that was approved for budget in the volleyball?
I want to say it was around $28,000.
So we're talking about $7,000 new money from last year that we set aside last year, basically, right? We set aside $28,000 last year. That'd be another seven to finish the project.
I, I understand the math, but we didn't really set the money aside. It was just, it was.
It was budgeted though, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, Mr. Rich, the one thing that you could add for, for Lance, because I don't know, I don't remember if, if Mark and Ed presented it, but in order to make the solution work, we had to change the backboards in the basketball gym. And that was the big additional cost, which made us, which made them say, uh, we can't do it because it's way over the budget allocation. So if we could get those, I don't know if Ed still has those numbers or if we have them laying around still, but.
He does. He, he, if, if you want to change the way the hoops go up and down, I do believe he has that information.
I think that's something we're interested. I think that really would help the program. I mean.
Well, I mean, the only, uh, girls volleyball program in the county that doesn't, can't practice is too bad.
Yeah, cutting the track up doesn't upset me much, but I would like to see prices on the, on the girls volleyball.
Well, that's one thing that we, um, when, when you have the intermittent meeting, if you will.
Right.
Um, I'll have Ed have his latest and greatest numbers on those things.
Okay.
Okay?
But the number budget, the budget numbers we have right now are with these things out that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you put something in, it goes to the fund balance. Okay. Debt service. Next slide, please. All right. So with our debt service, again, we have about 1.2 million per year to 2027. Now, we do allocate monies here to try to lower our per-student cost, which would impact what we get charged when we, when we send a student to a cyber school. All right. Um, Jen, anything you want to add on that highlighted section?
Only that, um, Mr. Rich is correct. It's that 300,000 when we, when we put it into that 5,000 fund, it's not included in our cost. And that represents what we will probably pay in cyber school, of course, kids that, um, tend there. However, at any given moment, they can come back here. And, um, I know principals do a good job of trying to have that come back in person. So I leave it inherited by the temporary reserve items, hoping that we don't have to spend that. Rather than like to that, to it, to the non-happy.
Okay. Next slide. So local revenues, uh, our assessment values did go up. Um, we are putting in a, a tax increase, uh, to the index. And the bottom line with LECI, the Local Effort Capacity Index, we have the second highest median income in Lawrence County and the lowest tax rate. So in the state's opinion, you can, you can pay more. So if we do not show an effort to raise local funds, we will leave potential state dollars on the table. Don't ask me the fractionality, how that goes into the funding formula. Um, Jen could show you the paper. You're welcome to do your doctoral thesis on how it works out. But all I can explain to you is the concept. So let's go to the next slide, please. Okay. So in Laurel, in Laurel, our total assessed value for every property is over 362 million. Nemo Farms alone is about $2 to $3 million.
Andy just declared bankrupt.
So if you take the number of parcels, 4,400 divided by the total assessed value, so the average assessed, assessed value, not market value, but assessed value is 81,669,28, okay? Uh, medium homestead value would be 93,600. So. if you look at, if you take the annual tax bill, which is eighty-one thousand, and you go no tax increase, the bill is about eleven fifty-seven. If you go halfway to the index, it goes to eleven seventy-eight. If you go to the index, it goes eleven ninety-nine or forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Now, I understand criticisms and no one likes to raise taxes. Everything's gone up. Nobody wants to put more pressure on our families. Eighty percent, and I hope this is recorded so Mr. Hamerschmidt can hear. I know that eighty percent of our families don't have anybody in school right now, but they did. And people paid when their kids were coming through. So, so I'm sympathetic to eighty percent don't have kids in school. I'm sympathetic to fixed incomes. It, it still comes down to forty-one dollars if we go to the index. As you reflect on that slide, are there any question, comment, or concern for Jen or I on, on a tax bill? If you look at the bottom, sixty-five thousand dollars in assessment, ninety thousand dollars in assessment, a hundred fifty thousand dollars in assessment, two hundred thousand dollars in assessment, and if it was halfway to the index, what it would cost? Or if it was full way to the index, what it would cost?
How much new money was that generated?
About two hundred thousand dollars. So again, I start to think that, all right, if we can get two hundred thousand dollars this year, we got that one point two, now you have a way to get to one point four million in the deficit. You know, and, and, uh, if we'd have done halfway last year and full this year, then it'd have been a hundred thousand in new money last year and two hundred thousand this year for three hundred thousand dollars. So. And also Homestead Farmstead is fully funded again this year. So for some of these things, it could still be a net decrease in the, in the, in the tax burden on the taxpayer, even though we're increasing what you're telling them to pay on your end. Next slide, please. Seven thousand. Okay.
Lynn, real, real quick. Um, just so we're, just so we're representing this right, we're saying that on average, that's what it would be per family. However, individual families will have different burdens.
Right. That's why we try to give a range. So, you know, if you know what your assessed value of your property is between sixty-five and two hundred, you can guesstimate, you know, um, but the, but the bottom line is if, if yours, if your property is assessed somewhere between sixty-five thousand and two hundred thousand, your increase is going to be between thirty-three dollars and a hundred one dollars.
Right. But that's, that's why I said whenever we say that, you know, forty-three dollars, that's kind of a misrepresentation. So I didn't want people calling the school saying, hey, no, no, I got your recording. It says forty dollars.
Forty more dollars, let's say.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we represented correctly that on average per household, per district, individual. It's that amount, however, the true amount would differ based on, you know, household.
Right. Based on the individual parcel. Which one of those forty-four hundred parcels? Okay, state revenues. So the, the governor, his budget as it sits right now, calls for a hundred five thousand dollars additional money for Laurel. If you look at the Wolf years, Wolf got about twenty-five percent of what he asked for. So Jen budgeted flat funding as far as the straight state, um, basic education funding, uh, but, uh, we do show an increase in P C C D for mental health and the physical safety grant. And as she put on here, we are projecting flat funding for our basic education subsidy and for special education. So, um, we are looking for twelve, twelve-four from the government and then from the state or from the feds. All right. So I want you to look at nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. We're going to see similar numbers when ARP ESSER is over after, uh, September of twenty twenty-four. So right now there's an additional six hundred thousand dollars in there. That's the last of the ESSER money. If you look on the board here, ESSER one is gone, ESSER two is gone, ESSER three set aside will be gone by.
The student part will be gone, it's gone, and then the D D is a hundred dollars and, um, and then social, social, emotional. But we have to spend, still have to spend that.
So out of the set aside monies, there's a whole eight thousand dollars left. So if you look, you know, we do have in ESSER three, supplant the literacy team. That expires when? At the end of this year. So that was included in ESSER three, but won't make the third year. Uh, substitute money, the academic support money. That's next year as well. And then the, uh, the library is in there. Now what, what we, like, for example, with that pot of money with the library, we're saying we need to really reconfigure the library due to safety. You know, that, um, the, the products for the library in the, in the twenty-first century are safer than what Mr. Hale had, uh, fifty, sixty years ago. So, uh, under the guise of physical safety, that was the checkbox. We, we, we utilize those physical safety monies, uh, for the library.
Just so they know what ESSER's money is.
Okay. So during COVID, you have a problem, throw money at it from the federal government, ARP ESSER. So they did three different rounds, ESSER one, two, and three. With the set aside, you couldn't get to your ESSER three money until you satisfied the, the set aside needs and parameters. So what I did is, um, just kept a little note card up here, okay? So you can see where the monies are, uh, as of what date, where they are, what we spent it on, as it expires, and, and what's there. So, uh, you know, if, if there was a rough cheat sheet for someone coming in off the street and want to know where our ARP ESSER money was going, that, that's where it's at. You're welcome. Okay, spreadsheet next. Keep going, one more slide. All right. So again, sorry for the visuals. Um, the board does have this in their packet, doesn't show up well, uh, on the slide, but basically what, what we just, uh, what Jen just said there as far as what's remaining, what's not, um, that, that's all detailed in the spreadsheet as far as our ARP ESSER money. Next slide. So line items supported or supplanted. So another key feature of some of these monies is typically in federal grants, you are not allowed to supplant. ARP ESSER, you could. So when all, here's, here's your budgetary decision next year. See everything up there? That's all supplanted by ESSER and that's all going to become local effort. So now what do we do? If you look at the two big things that stick out, okay, the library will be done, but I'm going to look to the principals. You know, we have these Kelly services for academic support. You have three, four, five, six. You have four down there, okay? You've got the, the cyber library person, and I think we budget for two, two or three positions. But so I'm telling you right now, a fiscal year in advance, those are things on, on the table, uh, relative to, uh, what do we do? You know, the social, emotional, professional development, that's part of the set aside. We have to do that. That'll be gone, you know, Study Island, we benchmark with Study Island, Ed Genuity, there's our cy- cyber link it, that's our data warehouse. These, and what I will also say is, these are also things that you paid for locally prior to ESSER. So there's going to be some tough decisions come next year. Next slide. Okay. So in a nutshell, if you look in two fiscal years, it's two point eight million dollars difference between where we were and where we are. You know, the, the, the bottom line is if you want to get to a balanced budget in a public entity, it's people. It's people. If you want to get to a balanced budget and get to zero and use that economic furlough language, um, which I'm not recommending. But you're going, you're going to get a very simple question as board members when you walk in the community. Why can't you balance the budget? I got to balance my budget at home. Why can't you balance the budget? And that's a fair question.
Well, if I raised taxes high enough, I would have no problem.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, I don't know what else answer you give them. I just, um, you can only cut so much.
Right. I agree with you.
You, you're not going to, you're not going to balance the budget on salaries and benefits. It's just.
No, and, and again, and, and, and that's why I point to other districts of similar size and, and their employment burdens. I don't think we're overstaffed here. I'm not, I'm not looking at a lot of fluff. So that, that being, and, and I already said, you, you don't cut the budget cutting crayons.
And we have eliminated a few positions over the last four years.
We have.
Just to try and, you know, stick with our, our student enrollment.
So since oh-nine-ten, because every year they make a master schedule spreadsheet and I found one from oh-nine-ten, which precedes me, okay, to this current year. There are nine less names on the header since the nine-ten school year. I mean, that's easily calculated at nine hundred thousand dollars right there. Where administrations over time have said, we're not replacing everything. And that's just the high school, correct? Okay, any particular questions? Again, this is budget one. We'll have the state of Laurel, um, to see the final ins and outs. But when you in June pass the second reading, that will be our fiscal bible for the next twelve months. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we'll move on to comments and questions. I will take those after, at the end of the agenda. Um, we don't have to do the approval minutes. The treasurer's report, the testament report, the bill listings, this will all be on next Wednesday's agenda. The food service bill listings. Um, item nine. Uh, board action items, our retirements, resignations. Approve and accept the following retirement resignation, resignation of Mr. Matt Pertow, academic games advisor. Any questions on A? Uh, B, professional development workshops, approve the following professional development workshop seminars. Uh, one is cafeteria staff to attend the culinary training sessions offered July twelfth, eleventh, twelfth. Um, Crest Elementary School, Seneca Valley. Cost of district will be wages, mileage, and meals. Travel, travel scholarships have been applied for. Any questions on item B? Oh, okay. Didn't see that. Jennifer Mauser and Melissa Nagel to purchase a recording of the school nurses' best strategies for success during school medical emergencies and the cost of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Any questions on item B? Thanks, Dave. Okay. Item C, uh, summer student workshops, approve up to four students to work through career link in Laurel School District buildings and grounds in the role of twenty-twenty-three summer help cleaners with that NOVAD and the acting supervisor. Career Links is responsible for payment of these students. Any questions on item C? And I believe this is something we do every year. Uh, item D, custodian transfer, approve the transfer of Angelina Schuler from part-time to full-time custodian effective July first, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on item D? Item E, compensation plan, uh, computer technician. Uh, is right. Approve the, approve the attached compensation plan for computer technician, network specialist effective July first. I believe this is something that we've all talked. I, I've got a hold of you. Any else, so any questions on that? Item F, computer technician, uh, network specialist. Approve Jerry Wallace as a computer technician, uh, network specialist as per the computer technician network specialist compa- chase, compensation plan effective July first, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on item? Item G, head, uh, girls' basketball coach. That's, uh, we don't have a name. We do have, uh, we will be talking about that later tonight. Um, Act on ninety-three agreement, uh, that's prove the attached Act ninety-three agreement. And that's something that, uh, we met about tonight and.
If we don't have it for next week, we'll have it for Jen.
We'll try and get the information there, but it wasn't there, so you can look it up. And if you have any questions, call us. Um, item I, addition to volunteer and non-instructural substitute listing for the twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Approve the attached list of additions of the volunteer and non-instructural substitute listings. I believe you all have that in your board docs. You get a chance to look that over. Any questions on item I? Uh, item ten, committee of the whole. Item one, class of twenty, twenty-three graduates. You should also have that list in your board docs. Uh, any questions on A? Is everybody graduating?
Well, did they get determination in next week or two?
Still leaning on a few?
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple like to make it interesting.
Well, that's what you get paid for.
Hit some meetings this week.
Okay, good. That's nice to know. Uh, item B, wrestling co-op with Wilmington. Uh, approve the agreement between Laurel School District and the Wilmington Area School District to continue the wrestling co-op for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Wilmington Area School District will be charged per student wrestler based on the program's actual cost. Uh, in the past, it has been nine hundred and fifty dollars per wrestler. Any questions on that, item B? Item C, uh, approve PNC Bank, Washington Center, Newcastle, PA as a depository treasurer for the general fund for the twenty-twenty, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Any questions on item C? Item D, uh, approve First National Bank Laurel Office as a depository for the following Laurel School District funds for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The middle high school activities fund, the elementary activity fund, and the cafeteria fund. Any questions on item D? Item E, school solicitor, approve Matt Mangino as a school solicitor, uh, at the, um, I'm not sure what the rate is. Last year it was a hundred and thirty.
He hasn't asked for an increase, so.
Okay, so we'll assume it's the same as last.
Year.
Any questions on item E? Item F is approve Andrews and Price as special education council at the rate of.
We'll, we'll have to confirm what the rate is for the upcoming year.
Last year it was one forty. We'll have to confirm it this year. Uh, item G, volunteer fire department contributions, uh, for the district to, uh, give two hundred dollars each to the three township volunteer fire departments, Hickory Scott and Slipper Rock. Any questions on G? H, uh, Lawrence County Fairgrounds, approve Lawrence County Fairgrounds. Do park vehicles on the blacktop surfaces of the district parking lots if there is inclement weather during the fair week. This is pretty early for this, isn't it? Or we just, I guess I don't see anything happening between now and then. Uh, they have also asked permission to obtain water from the lake during the week, provided no vehicles larger than what are permitted on roads are used. Any questions on J? H. Item I, add. Item I, advertising for twenty-three, twenty-four bids. Prove the district to advertise bids over twenty-two thousand five hundred or seek quotes for items between twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred or to obtain quotes from a state bid list as determined by law for items in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as possible. Any questions on that? Item J, uh, auditing firm, approve the attached engagement letter with McGill Power Bell and Associates LLP for the audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. It's a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which includes a single audit for federal funds, twenty-two five hundred was last year. Any questions on item J? Item K, field trips, approve uh the following field trips, Ms. Gardner and Ms. Benstrom and six students to University of Pittsburgh on April twenty-eighth. Uh, for annual CHS competition and sta- public forum discussion. It's cost the district for transportation substitutes for Ms. Gardner and Mrs. Benstrom. The second one is Mrs. Rich, Mrs. Boyer, Mrs. Menor, uh, Mrs. Bartley and six students to Keystone Safari on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for educational enrichment, it's cost the district for transportation and entrance fees is one hundred and thirty-two dollars and that's from the special ed budget. Any questions on item K? Item L, uh, the a la carte menu and milk prices. Um, approve the attached list of a la carte menu pricing and milk pricing for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Are there any changes on that, or is that? Are we changing prices or we're just? Okay.
The, relative to the a la carte, milk and lunch?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Okay, milk and lunch, David?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what Mr. Redford was concerned about.
Right.
Milk and lunch.
Okay. Um, item M. Approve the attached resolution approving the LCTC uh budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A total of seven million one hundred and six dollars, four hundred and twenty-one cents with five million four hundred ninety-five dollars and two hundred and forty-five cents as participating school districts share, uh, no cha- oh, this is no change from last year. The cost per regular education student is twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty, same as last year with an additional amount of five thousand per special education student, also same as last year. Any questions on item M? Uh, item N is supply bid awards. Um, award the following bids for custodial maintenance, science, art, tech, ed and vocational edu- agriculture, ed supplies for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. See attachments for breakdowns by item vendor and rejected items. Uh, under custodial maintenance were twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-two cents. Science is two thousand ninety-eight dollars, twenty-seven cents, art is one thousand seven hundred and forty-four sixty-five cents, tech ed, seven thousand one hundred sixty-four and forty-two cents, voag, seven thousand three hundred six dollars and seven cents. A total of forty-one thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Any questions? That is all. Any questions on item N? Item O, uh, summer programs. Approve summer remediation credit recovery programs for the seventh and eighth grade and K through third grade as per attached agreement. The elementary program is run for five weeks, three days a week, three hours per day. Any questions on item O? Um. Item P, uh, guidance intern, approve Jessica Bobic, student from Slipper Rock University to receive internship training with Mr. Matt Pertow during the fall of twenty twenty-three. Any questions on guidance? Policy six eighteen, the first reading. That's the, approve the first reading of policy six eighteen, student, student activity funds to complete language regarding lose the uh, desolate, the, getting rid of the activity account? It's not coming out for some reason, but any questions on that item? Okay. Um, item R, attachments to policy six twenty-six, federal fiscal compliance, approve the attachments to policy six twenty-six, federal financial compliance as follows. Uh, procurement, federal programs, types of costs, obligations and property management, new time and effort procedures. Um, is that you, Jen?
Yeah, um, the first one is this updates the thresholds, the specialty thresholds to twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred, like we just did in the previous motion. Um, this is the actual attachment to go with the policy. And then the next two are federal requirements, um, that the IU went through, everybody in the crowd, well, everybody in their IU um, and determined that we did not have sufficient, um, attachments. They're not policies, but they're attachments to policy, just more procedures than anything. Um, so those two they're recommending that we add. One of them is just time and efforts and says that we're gonna fill out the paperwork that if we're, if one of our teachers or anybody is working, throw for federal dollars and local dollars.
Which is a requirement of federal monies anyway.
Right, is, but we didn't have the attachments and stuff, we didn't, we do it.
Right.
And the other one is, um, more regarding the ad stuff. If, if we bought, we bought properties, the, the tag that say to go on the actual property, that's to say um, where funding source came from, um, an ID number and I think he and I were gonna give him stuff like that. We'll do that, but now we have a paperwork issue.
Okay, sounds interesting, thank you. Uh, item S, attached to policy three oh four, employment of district staff.
So, we're, we're working on creating a new one, but if you actually look at your document, it might look a little familiar in your board docs.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, so Laurel, a long time ago, back in two thousand one, codified who should be on what when you go through a hiring process? And Tim gave me this, um, back in two thousand sixteen or something. And we've used it as a guide, but it's no good. Tim had the only surviving copy and I had it shoved in a three-ring binder. So I asked Jen, uh, where exactly does this fit in our policy manual? And this, this will be like an attachment, an administrative regulation. Um, so if, uh, if, if you wanna know in the future, if you're hiring a teacher, a principal, curriculum director, superintendent, secretary, blah, 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 I mean, it's very exhaustive. Um, what, what, what are the steps, what's the board involvement, et cetera? So there was obviously a lot of methodology that went into that and we'll, we'll get a nice new clean copy, but that's it.
Well, it keeps everything consistent, you're not.
Right.
Changing every time, who's, who's doing?
Well, and I'm not asking you every time, okay, we got a secretarial hire, we got a coach hire, we got, you know.
Right, right, good. Um. Item T, approve the attached amendment to the twenty-three, twenty-four student course catalog regarding, regarding senior privilege guidelines.
So just in a nutshell, um, we're revising, uh, senior privilege. The max a senior can get is two periods for their privilege. Um, they can get a minimum of one, but it either must be one or one, two or eight or, excuse me, or nine or eight, nine, okay? Um, so they also have to have, uh, be academically on track. Miss less than ten days of school from the previous school year, not counting medical excuses. Three point O Q or better, no violations of the student code of conduct that has resulted in any type of suspension and have no outstanding debts to the district. So if it's gonna be a privilege, we're, we're going to have, uh, criteria.
Any questions on item T? Uh, item U, proposed final general fund budget, and this would be our, uh, first reading of our, our, our budget.
Yes.
Any questions on item U? It's a long agenda, we're just about out of the alphabet, we've got five more. Um. Is there any new business to come before the board this evening?
Couple, couple things, Tim. One, I see Bobby Lynn's here, like to congratulate her husband on Lawrence County Hall of Fame. Two, um, we have to watch, I mean, we don't have, the only people in the audience that are gonna be on the board is Bobby Lynn, why you're not. Should run for the board here every meeting, I don't know, that's your business, but I see as much as I can. Um, that being said, um, we have to watch attrition because make no mistake about it. It's such a weird paradigm and I almost feel like it's the Truman Show or something. So we have one political party that's trying to destroy public education. Then we have another political party that makes you wanna destroy public education. And I don't, I don't know what they're doing and it's just like this tug of war, I don't know. I, I, I usually can figure things out and I can't. But the one thing we have to do is kinda not make ourselves part of the problem is as addictive it can, as addictive as it can be to attrition people off, that's money, it's just lopping heads off the dragon. You don't wanna all of a sudden be just as uh, just as, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, look, be looked just as favorable to private education. You know, I mean, it shouldn't even come up that we're not, you know. I know he's just saying it to say, we don't have to fill out an art teacher. But I mean, the second we start making these decisions and not offering maybe some higher level math or not offering some of the arts. We have to, we have a fiduciary duty or a taxpayer, there's no doubt about it. I mean, that's, that's what we have to bear, but also we, we bear an even larger responsibility to our students. We just have to watch and the sake of the budget, you know. Obviously, we don't want the Titanic to stay with any more water on our ass, but we, it's just, we have to make sure we're not, we, we do have the elementary, we've got some small classes coming up, so we are gonna have those conversations, I think, eventually where we will have a math teacher retiring, but we're gonna have a grade with sixty-some kids, we're not gonna give up the surface, there's nobody there. But we're not there yet, like you said, so I think we just have to be, uh, be careful. Um, and then the last thing, I don't hear it around here, but I hear it around my school, which is a lot more progressive, whatever that would become. But I hear a lot about this word equity and, and it sounds really good on the surface and it's a cancer. And this is my opinion, but I just won't, I just won't put that out, just kinda send this out here as a curriculum chair, and I'm, I'm sure we could have a meeting and, and there'd be a unanimous, then out of state curriculum meeting. I don't think it's a problem, I've never had one of my little girls come home and say, you know, we heard about being equitable. Being equitable is not the same as equality, okay? You know, I, I, I'm a nerd, sometimes I watch Congress, the span and so forth. And these, as these educational people in the education department are put on the spot, coming up with these, all these cool words. What is equality? Well, everybody wants to talk about equality, I don't wanna talk about equality. Equality is about equality of opportunity. You shouldn't be in this building if you don't believe in equality of opportunity. Everybody should have the same opportunities as the next student. Equity has nothing to do with equal opportunity. Equity is a hundred percent equal result. The only way to do that is exactly the, uh, the example that Tim gave with interest rates. He's been doing a good job, I like that credit score, give him some money, I'm gonna give it to him. He's been drunk last week, kind of behind on saying he needs breaks, okay? That's going for equity, that's taking something that somebody has earned and giving it to somebody that has not earned. That's nothing that this country is based on. That's not even a political argument, that's just a financial, economical argument. We are built on capitalism, equal opportunity, never equal result, because equal results kill the human spirit. Lot of people tried it, they've all started that. If some, you know, sometimes it takes longer than others. China's probably not gonna make it to the end of the decade, nobody thinks that, but I think it's coming, that's neither here nor there. So I just wanna be ahead of that ball, when this communist regime we have for Department of Education starts, you know, putting these edics down and equity's in it, I'd like to know about it, because it's a cancer. So, just putting that on the radar.
Everybody's probably pretty much in agreement with you and, uh, I mean, I know what you're talking about, I'm sure they do. I know my daughter's heard me preach about this a thousand times, so I mean, it's. But you do have to educate yourself because they, they do change the meanings of words nowadays and you can agree to something not realizing what, what, what they're even talking about, so.
Just to chime in what, uh, Lance said, my short period of time that I'll have here, uh, probably about a, a week or two before I come on. I type two little phrases, be proactive. And I've learned that for twenty years on the board here. You gotta look around the bend, that's what's proactive, because when something's coming up, you don't wanna be blinded by it. You wanna be ahead of the curve in a, a, important, very important, you know, just don't wait and be forced. Forced on to be proactive and have accountability.
Anything else this evening? Any question from the audience on any agenda, non-agenda item? Uh, if not, uh, we're gonna take a short break, cause I've been sitting here for three hours and we're gonna come back for executive session for, um, personnel. Um, with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.